Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Lakewood Virtual Study Session on March 21st, 2022. For those folks who would like to engage on the public input piece tonight, that number is going to be 720-707-2699. Webinar ID 836-20829098. Press pound and then once you're in, press pound once more. And when we get to those two portions, you'll press star nine to request to speak, star six to unmute. With that, before we go to roll, I know that Mr. Oliver and Ms. Shahrazai will not be with us tonight. So we'll go ahead and go forth with that roll. Madam Clerk.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Mayat Guerrero.
Here.
Thank you. Oliver. Shahrazai. Springsteen.
Here.
Stuart.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, and I would like to thank all those that are tuning in. And I will just say a quick happy birthday to Counselor Shahrazai. And Ms. Mayat Guerrero is traveling cross-country on an Amtrak. So hopefully she will keep her connection as she moves. But that's pretty cool that you're with us. I appreciate that. And now, so we have a presentation is our first item, item three. Then item four will be another presentation. There are a couple of action items on the second piece for some council direction. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to read item three into the record. And then we'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Ben Goldstein.
Item three, presentation, Jefferson County Public Health Presentation Regarding Youth Smoking and Vaping.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Goldstein.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have a presentation that was initiated by the past council, by a member of the past council. But I think you all will find it engaging as well. We have Katie Lazar. She's the Tobacco Policy and Communications Specialist with Jefferson County Public Health. And I think we're getting her over now. So there'll be a presentation and an opportunity for you all to ask questions then.
Thank you, and Ms. Lazar, welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. I was just rejoining as a panelist, so I may have missed some of that. But is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, please. The floor is all yours.
All right. All right, and then I might turn my camera off while I present just to help with bandwidth issues, if that's okay?
Sounds good.
All right, well, thank you so much, everyone, for having me tonight. Like they said, my name is Katie Lazar, and I am the Tobacco Prevention Policy Specialist with Jefferson County Public Health. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening on reducing youth tobacco and vaping use in Lakewood. So, there we go. All right, so a quick overview of what I plan to discuss tonight. I'm going to start out with an overview of youth tobacco and vape use in Jefferson County. Go over some state and local data and discuss recent efforts to address this public health crisis. And then I'll finish off by discussing opportunities for policy action and then end with a quick discussion on enforcement of those policies. So let's kick it off by discussing what all has been happening in Jefferson County around addressing youth tobacco and vape use over the last couple of years. So I wanted to start off with saying that even with the pandemic, there has been a lot of efforts still devoted to reducing tobacco and vape use. And we're really grateful to be partnering with municipal partners like yourself on this work. One effort I wanted to highlight and celebrate was our Let's Clear the Air We Share campaign that we ran this past summer. And the idea for this campaign really came out of a meeting with city managers across Jefferson County, expressing that there was difficulty in enforcing these smoke and vapor-free laws. And that also, there just seemed to be a lack of awareness in the general public that these laws existed and where they existed. So the purpose of this campaign was really to spread awareness of the harms of secondhand smoke and aerosol from e-cigarettes, secondhand smoke and then secondhand aerosol from e-cigarettes, as well as to educate about, you know, where the smoke and vapor-free laws existed across Jefferson County. And we had the chance to partner with every jurisdiction in Jefferson County. And we ran these ads digitally on social media. And then, as you can see, on some bus shelters. And then we also had them on bus panels across the county. So we're really proud of this campaign and super grateful to have been able to partner with Lakewood on it. Moving over to data. We are encouraged by the progress that we have been seeing. Just a quick note that this is statewide data because we did not have local county data in 2017 for Jeffco. So just a quick note, this is across the state of Colorado. But we are seeing a steady and slight decline in youth vape use and continued declines in those who habitually spoke cigarettes, as well as used cigars, chewed tobacco, hookah, et cetera. But one area I really want to highlight is this perception of vaping as risky. So back in 2017, there was this narrative around vaping as like, it's just harmless water vapor. And through education efforts and policy work, driving conversation around the harms of vaping, we've really been able to see this awareness of harm go up, which is really exciting for us. However, it is important to look closer at the data and understand that health disparities continue to exist in tobacco. The tobacco industry has spent decades and billions of dollars aggressively marketing their products, especially flavored tobacco products, token addict youth, low-income communities, the LGBTQ plus community, and communities of color. And the historical targeting of black and brown communities by the tobacco industry has led to devastating and preventable death and disease. So when we look at this 5.7% total when it comes to youth cigarette use in Colorado, we're not quite getting the whole picture because of the tactics that have been employed to target certain groups. We are seeing disproportionate use amongst these groups that have experienced these disparities. So this is with youth cigarette use. And then we see a similar trend when we look at youth e-cigarette use as well, particularly among the indigenous community and then the LGBTQ plus community. Honing in on Jefferson County a little bit more, we see that Jeffco data is about at or even below the state usage levels, which is really exciting. Two areas I want to highlight on this slide are that when we look at the breakdown in, you know, ninth through 12th grade, we do see this staggering, the staggering increase in use with 11th and 12th grade. So while overall use is about 26%, almost a third, we jumped to almost a third when we look at 11th and 12th grade specifically. And then when we talk about policy around youth access, this figure over here in the bottom right is important to us. That 63.8% of students report that it would be sort of easy or very easy to get vapor products if they'd like. So it's important to note that that data is from 2019, and a lot has happened since then. And we don't have the 2021 data quite yet, but we're expecting to get it later this summer. And once we have that data, we're hoping to really understand the pandemic's impact on youth use. But in the meantime, I wanted to share what we're hearing anecdotally from our school partners who are dealing with this day after day. So this is, we chatted with the Drug Intervention Specialist Nurse at Lakewood High School, who really stressed to us that since returning to in-school operation, there has been an increase in vaping at schools overall. And they do believe that it has surpassed pre-pandemic levels. The dynamics of vaping are changing. The levels of nicotine dependence are increasing among students, with reports of students having difficulty making it through a two-hour period without experiencing those onset of nicotine withdrawal symptoms. And they're really struggling to quit these products. It's also important to note that we're seeing nicotine use intersecting with other behavioral health concerns, including the use of other substances, as well as anxiety and depression. And then finally, there's an observation that the devices that are seen most often and confiscated at schools currently are the flavored disposable types. Which, just to note, those are the types that were exempted in the federal flavor ban of tobacco products. All right, so I guess just one more note on this slide. It really does highlight the need of supporting young people at any and all levels that we possibly can. And our sense that the issue of youth nicotine dependence really isn't going away and has been exacerbated by the pandemic. And then finally, I want to address the policy work that municipalities have been doing to address youth vaping and tobacco use across Jefferson County. So here, we're looking at four policies in particular. A full tobacco retail license, codifying the minimum legal age for the sale of tobacco is 21 in your local ordinance, prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco. And then protections that go beyond the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act for protecting those public spaces as smoke and vapor-free. Since 2019, there has continued to be a lot of great policy work happening across the county. We've had a number of municipalities update their retail licenses to full tobacco retail licenses, so no exemptions for any tobacco product. We had Edgewater recently become the first community in Jefferson County to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco. And we have some awesome work that's being done and expanding protections beyond the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act. And then just to note that unincorporated Jefferson County is in the early stages of considering a full tobacco retail license at the county level, codifying that minimum legal sale age, and then expanding those protections beyond the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act. All right, so that is the status of where things are at in Jefferson County. And now I'm going to move into talking about policy options that exist to continue taking action on this public health crisis. And there are two policy arms in particular I'm going to discuss tonight. One is youth access policies, and the other is that smoke and vapor-free protection laws. So first up, youth access policies, these are strategies to reduce youth access to tobacco products in the retail environment and ensure that responsible retailing. What are the benefits of having a strong local tobacco retail license? Well, it is a great strategy to curb youth tobacco use because you're preventing those illegal sales to young people. The local enforcement allows for consistent enforcement at that local level. And you, as a local municipality, can know that those checks are happening. And then by licensing all tobacco products, it does provide a fair, even playing field for all tobacco retailers. So as you saw on the municipal policy chart that I just had a couple of slides back, Lakewood does not currently have a full tobacco retail license. Mayor Paul and those of you who were on council in 2019 will remember that there used to be financial penalties if a municipality passed a license on cigarettes. So in 2019, Lakewood City Council passed a non-cigarette tobacco retail license. And then shortly after, the state actually removed that preemption for licensing cigarettes. So those penalties that Lakewood would have faced no longer apply. The next year in 2020, Colorado passed a state tobacco retail license and raised the minimum legal sale age for tobacco from 18 to 21. And then on fall of 2021 is when retailers were supposed to have gotten their state license. So today Lakewood does remain only one of a couple of municipalities with the cigarette exemption. So one of my recommendations here tonight is to remove that cigarette exemption and then update the minimum legal sale age to 21. I'd also like to note that the state tobacco retail license was created in a way that allows municipalities to really build on it and further strengthen it. And Wheat Ridge is a great example of a municipality that did this with their tobacco retail license that they passed last year. So some options to strengthen it would be, right now, you, in Lakewood, no license will be issued within 500 feet of a school. A recommendation would be to increase that distance to 1,000 feet from any school or youth-serving organization. Right now, licenses are transferable from one person to another. And just to make sure that you're most up to date on who owns which license in the city, we recommend that licenses are non-transferable to new owners and that that new owner would reapply. And finally, right now, the ordinance states that the Lakewood PD and the city clerk shall monitor compliance checks under this chapter as the clerk and Lakewood PD deem appropriate. The city clerk shall also conduct licensee inspections on an annual basis. We just recommend updating that to a minimum of two compliance checks with underage buyers who are buying undercover. And any violations that happen should be rechecked within 45 days. And then finally, these are two additional policies that if you're looking at your current tobacco retail license, these can be added to that existing licensing ordinance. And both of these policies are meant to address the marketing tactics of the tobacco industry that I discussed earlier. The first is a comprehensive flavor policy. And the tobacco industry has historically used flavored products like menthol and other flavors to make their products more attractive to specific communities. This includes the black and African-American community, young people, the Hispanic community, and the LGBTQIA+ community. The industry has intentionally marketed these products to communities through the use of cultural experiences, events, icons, and even financial contributions to community organizations. So a comprehensive flavored tobacco policy is really meant to address that targeting and address the higher prevalence of flavored tobacco product use among young people. And then the other option would be to discuss tobacco advertising and where and how tobacco can be advertised. And this is meant to really reduce youth exposure to tobacco messaging and denormalize tobacco and vape use. And then quickly here, I'll talk about the second type of policy, which are the smoke and vapor-free policies. And these are really meant to reduce youth exposure to tobacco use and to denormalize that use and reduce initiation. So Lakewood has already been a leader in smoke-free and vapor-free protections in Jefferson County. So I really do want to celebrate that. You already have smoke-free and vapor-free parks and recreation areas, which does go beyond the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act. If you are looking to enact further protections in this area, one option is to add smoke and vapor-free patios to outdoor seating and dining. And this will further protect the people who work at those establishments and the patrons, especially since outdoor seating and dining has become such a popular option during the pandemic. And then the other option is, I know that Lakewood recently passed a common consumption ordinance. So an easy way to increase these protections is to require that when a location applies for a common consumption license, that you require that common consumption area to be smoke and vapor-free. And then finally, strong, consistent enforcement is key to making these policies successful. And Jefferson County Public Health is here to offer our support. We have funding to support with enforcement and compliance of these policies. We just always like to make sure that people know that we're available. So with tobacco retail licensing, this could look like recruiting young people to conduct those underage undercover buys, providing support to enforcement staff, providing signage and materials for retailers. For smoke and vapor-free laws, that could look like coordinating efforts with peace and code enforcement officers, or once again, providing that signage and that education to the public about where smoking and vaping are not permitted. And with both types of policies, we're happy to consider an intergovernmental agreement for JCPH to handle all or pieces of the enforcement or inspection process, similar to how we already do with restaurant inspections, if it's helpful to sort of take that load off of somebody's plate. And with that, I will turn it back to you all.
Great, fantastic. Well, thank you certainly very much for the update. And we can open the floor to questions from the council. I have just two quick questions. And Mr. Goldstein, you might be able to quarterback this first one. The codification of 21 or older, we regularly do that every year where we look at previous laws. And then each year we update those. And is that something that would be brought to us when we take that on?
We could actually, yeah, we could absolutely do that. We can bring the language to you if you'd like.
I think one of the things we're looking for from council, although there's no specific action requested for council tonight. If, you know, making changes to any of these laws is something that you're interested in, staff can certainly, you know, begin that process working with county. But also looking at potential laws at the state level, there's a piece of legislation right now, 1064, that would ban flavored tobacco products. So part of it is figuring out what the state's doing, where we fit in there. As Ms. Lazar pointed out, many of the state laws don't preempt the city from doing something further. But it might be duplicative if we're going through a flavor ban and the state's passing one as well.
Certainly, no, I appreciate that. And I guess, I guess maybe I don't fully understand. So the state of Colorado is 21, we just haven't codified it. However, we do yearly updates with our code. And I'm curious if that would fall into that. Or, and maybe that's a question for Ms. McKinney-Brown, the difference between the state acting at 21, and we're still subject to that, we just haven't codified it?
We are still, we are subject to that at this point. We do need to bring some codification updates back to the city council. And we've got a list of those. So yes, if that's something the city council wants us to bring forward, we will. And if you would like to see a report on Lakewood's current laws and the state's current laws that impact Lakewood, we can certainly get that to you very quickly.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Don't see any hands up at this point. Why don't I go to the public input piece? And maybe that might stir any questions. So we have a public input portion. Now, this is different than general public comment. This is your opportunity to ask any questions regarding the presentation or make any comments regarding this specific topic. The clerk will give out your name or your last four digits, will get you unmuted. So if you want to raise your hand, star nine, and then when you're called on, star six to unmute. I have three minutes. When you are about 30 seconds out, I'll give you a double tap and then ask you to wrap up. And if you give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going.
All ending in 4375.
Evening, 4375. Looks like you are in. If you wish to unmute and give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going.
Hi there. I just, this is Tess. I just wanted to clarify, is this right now for the public comment? This is not general public comment. This is for flavored tobacco?
No, well, yes, this is flavored tobacco. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought, are we going to have general public comment later?
No, ma'am, that's reserved for the second and fourth Mondays.
Okay, okay, sorry about that. So, but to the, like, later in this, on the agenda, we do have the licensing, the motel license, right?
Yes, yes, we'll have a public portion there as well.
Okay, okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I got confused. Well, so in terms of the, in terms of the flavored tobacco, I do just want to, I would just call into consideration the business and the economic impact that that's going to have. And just like what studies have been, you know, have been used to see, to look at the economic impact that that's going to have on small businesses and, you know, convenience stores and that sort of thing. That, and if it's going to have any at all. And then does that, would the ban also include or any consideration of it? Does that include flavored, like, cigars? Or is it just, are we just talking about the vaporizing? I just wanted to get clarification on some of the nuances of that. There's a lot of people talking about this now, but it's very, there's like little, you know, nuances, different places. So just wanted to get clear on some of that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the queue wish to speak on this topic? Press star nine, please. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public input. And I think, yeah, Tess, you bring up a great question because different communities have done different things regarding flavored tobacco, premium cigars, vaping. And I guess the question might go, Ms. Lazar, to where the state is at currently as drafted? And then maybe how that trickles down to what other cities have done?
Sure, so I can provide a little bit of an overview of what happened with the. So since I am funded by tobacco tax dollars, I can't really say too much about the bill except for where it is at. But the recommendation is, because the idea is to, I guess I'm trying to think about how to word this in the best way. There is currently, it's currently in the Finance Committee. It just passed the Health and Insurance Committee last week. There are amendments currently proposed, one being for 21 and up stores, and I believe for premium cigars and pipe tobacco. And there is a fiscal note that I could provide to council if they're interested in reading more about that at the state level. Because they've sort of done a preliminary analysis of that.
So I'm going to go to Ms. Mayat Guerrero. And you are also the Chair of our Legislative Committee, so maybe you want to weigh in in regards to that.
Yeah, I basically just, can you all hear me okay? Great, technology is amazing. Yeah, Ms. Lazar, I was going to let you know that I am the Chair of our Legislative Committee. I'm very easy to find if you don't already have my email. It's just mayatguerrero, or it's no, it's just guerrero@lakewood.org. And so if you wanted to send some things there, I'd be happy to make sure that our committee ends up, you know, paying attention to that if we're interested in it. And then my other question is if you could further clarify what was banned by the feds and like what impacts we're maybe seeing from that, both in terms of if we're seeing, maybe we just don't have any data yet about reduction in use to that. Or, you know, to our commenter's point, questions about business impacts.
Sure, so at the federal level, there was, and I can send through a report that kind of outlines this a little bit more in depth as well. But there was a removal of those pod-based systems like Juul, because Juul was getting a lot of attention for being the ones fueling this crisis, the youth vaping crisis. And what was left on the market are those disposable flavored products, which I think like puff bar is one of the most common ones right now. So what we saw at the federal level was just a lot of loopholes. And when there's an opportunity, when there's a loophole and there's an opportunity to make a product that kind of bypasses that loophole, that's exactly what we've seen. So that's why we've really been seeing that action at the local level is so important. Because there will be those loopholes, but the local level has the ability to close those. And then as far as research, I can definitely send some things through. I can share that anecdotally, we've heard from the mayor of Glenwood Springs. They had very, from their report, minimal business impact. They had one store that had one vape shop that had closed, but they had decided to move before the ban had even taken place. The rest of their businesses had not gone out of business. And I think Boulders reported something similar as well. But I can definitely put you in touch with city councilors. But I can definitely put you in touch with um, city councillors and mayors of other municipalities, if this is something you're interested in hearing more about firsthand.
Thank you. Ms. Springsteen.
Hi, I was, I, I'm just interested in, in looking at, at what some of the comments across the state are on this issue, and I came across a, a particular article that said uh, uh, it had a quote uh, from a state legislator saying, local laws are not the answer. If Denver, for instance, tomorrow raised the age of purchase to 21, all that's going to do is make the 7-Eleven in Lakewood in Littleton a lot more profitable than the ones in Denver County. So uh, to some extent, I, I think that's the problem with the local law on this issue. Um, I mean, the other thing that I think, you know, there's always unintended consequences and sort of pushing the problem around and you know, some people say vaping is, is better than smoking healthwise. Uh, I mean, if we're attacking both issues, does that push the uh, use to, to some other thing, some other illegal substance that's gonna be even worse for youth? So I guess that's part of my question is about the data and the studies and why are we doing this at the local level? Should, is this something that should be left to the state or the feds just because it'll just push the problem around the metro area? So that, that's my question. Thanks.
Sure. Without being able, once again, without being able to say too much about the state bill, just given um, where my funding comes from, I will say that, that um, to your point, I feel like there's been a sense of where a local law can really come in handy is when there are those loopholes left open at the state, at the federal level. So I think that is where, and it, it's similar for tobacco retail licensing, right? If we're saying that, oh, at the state, like they have this distance requirement from schools, but it's actually seen that if we go a little bit further, we're gonna reduce the number of tobacco establishments that a young person is seeing on their way to school. So really, the strength in a local law is the ability to be able to sort of rapidly correct any loopholes that may have been left in there.
Yeah, and, and I would just say that, you know, each community is different, and so this is good information for the council to ponder and Ms. Springsteen's question. I think that's how we got to the statewide issue is because Denver had passed a, a pretty prescriptive um, ban that was vetoed by Mayor Hancock, uh, saying that it should probably be more of a statewide conversation versus city to city because of the issues related to pushing, you know, different things to different communities. So I think there's a lot more that we're gonna learn and, and see where this bill goes through the legislature and um, and see where that fits or, or lands for the city council moving forward. Think it's great that there's some different options that were presented and this Lazar would be fantastic. I know this is on Lakewood Speaks. Pretty sure the presentation is on Lakewood Speaks. Um, if not, if you could send that to city council, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that council gets it and that uh, will share the PowerPoint as well with, with Lakewood Speaks.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this topic? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this. And again, thank you so much for, for all your work and for being with us this evening.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And clerk, if you want to read item four.
Item four, presentation, community action team update on the hotel motel lodging license.
All right. So we will now uh, begin this presentation, and I will also acknowledge that there were two uh, comments on Lakewood Speaks, one comment, one question, and we'll turn this over to Ms. Hudson.
Thank you. Good evening. The hotel motel lodging license was adopted by city council in 2019. And we committed to an annual checkback with city council to review the status of the impacts um, from this ordinance. So that's what we're doing this evening with some potential recommendations based on feedback we received at our last checkback from city council. So with that, I'd like to introduce Commander Alish, John Alish, who will be giving the presentation this evening. And he is in the waiting room.
All right.
Here it comes. Thank you.
And if, if I might miss Hudson, I, I think this is our first time meeting Commander Alish as he was last time sergeant. So congratulations.
Hello, everyone. So it's nice to see some old faces and a lot of new ones. I appreciate you having me tonight and uh, I want to say hi to Ms. Millard. It's good to see you again. So um, I want to thank you for having us here. We have as the city manager said, committed to um, yearly checkbacks. I think that's very valuable because we built this with you all about three years ago. And anything we build, you can always find room for improvement, but you also can, it's a good chance to celebrate successes. And I think there's a lot to celebrate tonight. I, I will tell you that I would, we are very proud um, of what we've accomplished with this ordinance and, and we feel like it's really made a difference in public safety. So I am going to share my screen now and bring up my PowerPoint. Let's see here. And let's see. Mary, I can see you on my screen. Can you give me a thumbs up if you can at least see my, my PowerPoint here? Perfect. All right. So uh, to start again, city council study session tonight, this is our second um, update from years past. So we originally passed it in 2019. We gave an update and hmm, into 2020, and here we are at the beginning of 2022 with our, our next update. So um, to begin, let's go back where we started. We came to council uh, in about 2018 with 2017 data on call load and community impact. And with that data, we found that total police calls for service at lodging facilities are various hotels and motels throughout our community was 2,952 calls for service in one year alone. And total criminal reports out of that is 1,135, which is just over a third. And so when we talk about criminal reports, that means that a police officer had to take a police report um, related to an allegation of a crime or a founded crime. And it may or may not have involved a citation or arrest. I know that um, one of the public speaks comments from Joshua Comden was um, asking what percentage of the total calls for service are Lakewood, are occurring at Lakewood lodging facilities? And then what percentage of total criminal reports are occurring there? That's a big ask, given that we have 40 plus hotels and all, and we have, you know, um, 40 plus square miles of, of um, places we serve. What I can tell you tonight, and um, hopefully this will give you some insight on that, is we average about 2,500 calls for service a week. So uh, and that's between police generated and also from the public. So when you look at it, um, and then you look at those criminal reports, it, it's definitely a portion of what we see. And then also what I will tell you is in those 2,500 calls for service a week, um, those are roughly, uh, we have roughly two or three hotels a week that make our top 10 list for calls for service locations. So it definitely has an impact on our community and it's definitely one of the high call generators. So to Mr. Comden, hopefully that at least gives you some guidance there. So the purpose of the ordinance, so recognizing the, the major uh, source of calls for service that we had and also criminal reports and, and crime and disorder. Um, staff came together and we wanted to address that calls for service occurring at hotels, hotels and motels within the city. And working with city council, city council established a lodging facility licensing ordinance to accomplish this. So um, you all came together as a council and said, we, we see the need for this and in 2019 passed it. So looking at calls for service, I know we have some new council members and you may not be familiar with this term that I keep throwing around. A calls for service is any call to law enforcement that results in a representative being dispatched or directed to the lodging facility. So that is for the purposes of this license, the definition. So if um, a citizen calls and says, I have a problem that they're at, and they're at the motel and we respond out, that's a call for service. If manager calls and says, I need someone removed, that's a call for service. Um, if a passerby calls and says they see a fight in the parking lot of a motel, that's a call for service. It also includes any police, police initiated activity at the lodging facility that results in a criminal report. And that's, that's pretty important. So let me unpack that a little for you. So we often provide proactive patrol and proactive stop buys, business checks, et cetera, at these hotels. That does not count against them as far as a call for service is concerned. It's only if our proactive activity results in a criminal report. So I'll give you an example. Let's say an officer is driving through the lot and they see a car with its license plate covered up or it's torn off and it might be stolen. If they get out of the car and they walk up, if they gather their patrol car and they walk up to the car they're looking at and they run the VIN number and it's fine, what we call is clear, but there's nothing to indicate it's a problem. If they drive away, that doesn't count. On the other hand, if they run that VIN number and they find that the vehicle is stolen, now we have a stolen vehicle report, that would be a call for service that counts against them. This is important for our surrounding communities that experience crime that moves beyond the hotel borders into the surrounding neighborhoods. One thing that we included in the ordinance is any call for service in the surrounding neighborhood that can be directly tied to the lodging facility. So I'm sure every council member can think of a hotel in their ward where maybe they've heard complaints about people who are staying at the motel, going into the neighboring um, the surrounding neighborhoods and maybe selling drugs or uh, engaging in otherwise illicit activity. If we can show that they were staying at the motel and that it's tied to that motel, the officer can email their cat agent and say, can you please include this call for service? I came out and I arrested someone for uh, drug distribution and they had a hotel key for that room and I learned they were staying there. Can you please add this to that facility's call for service number? Importantly, it does not include traffic citations or medical only calls. So if we are doing um, safety speed enforcement along Colfax and uh, our officers are running radar, let's say Colfax and Wards, and they keep stopping, cars generally keep stopping in front of the same motel. Even if we give that hotel location as the final traffic stop spot, that doesn't count against them. Uh, also medical only calls. So someone has a stroke, if someone falls down, if uh, we're checking on them for a medical reason, that doesn't count against them either. All right. So we've learned what calls for service are. Now let's talk about this ratio that you may have heard about. So the ratio is based on calls per service per room. So this is kind of an equalizer. What it does is it takes the numbers of call, the number of calls for service you have in a year and it divides it by the number of rooms you have. So if you have a hundred calls and you have a 10-room hotel, you have a 10 call for service ratio, because you have a hundred calls divided by 10, that's where you get your 10 per room per year. It's a standardized way of comparing motels. Uh, it's an accepted practice in the municipalities across the nation that have an ordinance like this. And importantly, city council, when we pass this law, established a maximum allowed ratio in the city Lakewood of 1.89 calls per service per room. So you can have a ho, a 10-room hotel and you're allowed about 18.9 calls for service per year before you'd be over the maximum allowed limit. So how we got where we are, uh, as the city manager mentioned, we passed it. Uh, you passed it on February 25th of 2019. You approved the ordinance. And after that, the, I want to go back to one of the key goals with this ordinance. One thing that, that council made very clear to us and we supported was that we wanted to make sure this was a conservative ordinance that recognized the importance of protecting small businesses and giving them every opportunity to improve. Um, one thing I like to note is this, this, this ordinance does not have very many punitive measures in it. There's no fines. Um, every sanction that's developed is designed to try and help improve the way they work and also improve public safety and improve their overall business. So um, in 2019, when you passed the ordinance, thinking of that conservative kind of slow posture, the only thing any hotel who was over that ratio from 2017 was required to do was meet with their cat agent. Each cat agent is assigned a number of hotels and um, those hotels that were over the limit just had to meet with their cat officer. And that cat agent talked through ways to reduce crime and disorder, uh, best management practices, et cetera. Um, we also offered to do a walkthrough of the property to take a look at lighting, locks, landscaping, um, how the parking lot looks. What are the ingress and egress points? You know, is it easy for a person of nefarious intent to drive in, steal something and then drive out the back way? Um, we looked at all that and we spoke to them, but other than that, there were no requirements in that first, that first year. So once they received that license after meeting with their cat officer, uh, the lodging facility had 12 months to reduce their calls for service. And again, only requirement was meeting with us. At the end of that 12-month period, those over the 189 ratio were inspected and came before the licensing authority. I want to talk about some early success from this. So after the first year or when, when we came to that first year, remember when I talked about that 1.89? Uh, council determined that 1.89 because that 1.89 and above encapsulated the top 40% of lodging facilities in the city. So the top 40% of calls for service generators were in that top 40%. They were over 1.89 or above. When we look at the data in the first year, and I shared the, this with you who were on council last year, um, nine of the 14 establishments saw a decline in calls from 2017 to 2019, 2020. Mesa Motor Inn saw a 57% drop. The Denver West saw a 53% drop. The Mallory Manor saw a 39% drop, and the Abar D had the largest drop of 64%. One thing we like to point out is ownership matters, and that's why this ordinance is so important because it requires the owners to be involved parties in ensuring a uh, low crime, safe uh, environment for their guests. Uh, the Mesa Motor Inn, before we passed this ordinance, had the highest calls for service in 2017. Um, once the uh, license came into effect, the, it was purchased by a new owner who worked with their cat team member and that hotel saw that 57% drop. So again, in that first license year, the highest calls for service hotel in the city dropped 57%. So now here's new data for everyone. Let's look at year two, licensing year two, 2021 to 2022. Uh, the Denver West End, you'll see they were about 4.5 calls for service per room in 2017. They brought it down to almost two in 2019, 2020, but we're still over the limit. Well, we're happy to say in this license year, they had a 58% decrease from their high in 2017 and they're now uh, in compliance with the ordinance and what council desired. Another example is the West 40. They were over the limit when it first passed. Uh, they actually increased, so they were one of the five hotels that increased in that first year. Uh, but then they, through working with us through sanctions and everything else, they saw their numbers decline to the point where now they're under, I mean, they're at about a one, two, something. I don't have the exact data here. I'm just looking at the graph with you all, and that's a 64% decrease from last year's high. So the West 40 has shown great improvement. Let's look at some continued success and some stable success. So the Abar D, the Rocky Mountain, the Sherrys and the Chalet. Um, remember when I said that the 1.89 was based on the top 40%? You'll notice that for the Chalet on the far right, that blue bar hits right at the 189 limit. That's because they were the last one in the top 40. So their hotel was the one who defined 1.89. You'll notice that every hotel on this chart, including the Chalet, was at 1.89 or above and post-licensing, they've all remained under that number. So the Abar D, the Rocky Mountain, the Sherrys and the Chalet all have shown improvement and continued success now into our second full license year. Let's go through the inspection process for a minute, because this is something that's pretty impressive uh, just from the effort involved. Uh, 13 facilities were inspected due to excessive calls for service ratio. So they were all over that 1.89 limit in a year. Uh, this was a major effort. I want to give some kudos right now to all our partners in the city clerk's office. They did amazing work setting it up. We have an amazing software program that runs this for us. Um, they, they've done a wonderful job. The building inspectors have really stepped up into a new role because they didn't, used to inspect hotel rooms, room by room, and they've uncovered some, some really important things for our community. Code enforcement as well. You know, that exterior look of how these hotels look is very important to the community. It sends a message and code enforcement has done that. And then the West Metro Fire Department, their um, investigators, a little bit of uncommon knowledge, I think, but uh, they normally only really have the authority to inspect common areas of large businesses. Little bit of uncommon knowledge, I think, but uh, they normally only really have the authority to inspect common areas of large businesses. Uh, but they have cert- uh, done every hotel room with us again, all the um. Uh, service closets uh a- anywhere that we need. And then all the members of the Lakewood Police Department. Uh, to include many specialized units all came together for these inspections. So uh, those of you who were on last year will remember some of these photos, but we wanted to make sure everyone got to see. Kind of some of the things we found. Here's an example of just unsanitary conditions. Um. From one of the hotels we inspected, obviously standing water is, is not a good thing. Uh, here's an example of some safety, life safety hazards that were uncovered. So you'll notice the. Uh, metal staircase on the left there is definitely unsafe for uh going up or down. And then on the right, if it's a little hard to see on your screen, that's a gas water heater. That has no venting, so it was just venting into that space. Or is it supposed to vent out into the open air? Um, one hotel we inspected in the first year. They had five rooms that each has that gas appliance that was venting directly into the room. Which you can imagine the carbon monoxide risk and they had to be shut down. Those rooms had to be temporarily shut down immediately. For safety risk until they were fixed. Um, here you're gonna see, uh. This is something that's very familiar to us in the law enforcement world, but gang graffiti, you'll see G K I there. That's a. Uh, notorious gang in the metro area that we've been dealing with for decades. Um, so you, you see in these rooms where they felt it was okay to graffiti inside them. On the right, there's an example of some of the code enforcement items we're talking about where you have piles of, of junk and. And rubbish that affect the look for the entire community and, and the um. The public safety along with it. So here's another example, more code enforcement type issues. On the left, you'll see a, a gas can sitting in there. With an electric heater below it and that was a fire risk that was identified at the time. Uh, probably one of the most important things to us as police officers is, is safety. Uh, when it comes to anyone feeling safe where they sleep at night, if you take a look at that left picture. That's an example of an attempted fix on a door that had been broken. So I, I don't think I would feel too comfortable having anyone that I love sleeping in that room. Knowing that it can be pretty flexed open pretty easily. So that, we, we look at that kind of thing too. And then again, more graffiti on the right there. So after inspections, uh, the hotels were taken to hearing. Uh, the owners are notified ten days prior to the hearing. Our CAT agent who's assigned to that hotel reviews all those calls that we look at over the year. And they identify any patterns. Um, and so if they identify that, let's say a hotel has a front parking lot and a back parking lot. And a lot of the problems occur in the back parking lot. They'll go out and check the lighting and be like, hmm. Isn't it strange that half the lights are out in the back parking lot? That's probably where they want to do it. And also it's away from the view of the major street. So CAT will make recommendations to the city attorney on what changes should be made through the sanctions. The owners are able to meet with the city attorney prior to the hearing to discuss any opportunities to come to an agreement. And an independent, independent hearing officer presides. We have an independent third party. That does not represent the city or the hotel to make their own unbiased decision in this process. So in the first round of hearings, ten hotels were taken to hearing. Every hotel agreed to that twelve month probation period with required sanctions. Uh, let's talk about that probation period for a minute. So remember when I said? They had twelve months to bring their numbers down before they could be held accountable in any way? That was the first part of us trying to be very conservative and very um business friendly. The second part was this probation period. So what we said is for the first time you're being held accountable with sanctions, we're going to give you a twelve month probation period. Where we're not going to be bringing you back for minor violations of the sanctions imposed. If you have a major violation of sanctions. Which we'll talk about in a minute, we would bring you back. But otherwise, we said, here's your chance with the first round of sanctions in this first twelve month period to. Show some progress. Um, so that automatically tells you why. I know one of the questions has been. Why does this ordinance take so long? What's the delay? What's going on? Part of that is because we built it for that kind of long walk with the hotel owners to say. We're not interested in shutting you down. We're interested in making you a safer place for you and your guests. So we're going to give you some time to um make changes that are necessary. And that twelve month probation period is an example. So let's talk about some examples of sanctions that were imposed. Simple things like registering all guests over the age of eighteen. Uh, posting a copy of the lodging facility's rules in the office and in each room. Uh, provide armed security during certain days and times of the week. So we had one hotel. That was, had high enough calls that they were required to provide armed security. I want to make clear here, it says armed security and not police because one thing we made sure to do is that we said it should be private security and not police. So there was no concerns about us saying, hey, we're going to force you to hire us. Uh, because that would have been improper. So they have to identify a third party um security agency of their choosing, a professional organization and enter into a contract where that sanction is included. And then finally, something simple like completing and adhering to all outstanding violations from the building department. Um, that's one thing that this license showed is. It really can help other agencies like the building department and the fire department. They may have some fines that can be imposed and other sanctions. But when they can tie their legitimate orders to the license. That helps them make sure that these very important things get done. So last resort, and you know, we, we called it last resort when we presented this originally, and that's really what it is, is revocation or shutdown. And what I can tell you is you all now know, since this was passed, um, we have two hotels that are no longer operating. Um, one's winding down. Uh, this one here was the um hotel owner agreed to the license revocation. So their license was revoked and that's why you see the signs that say notice of revocation. In the case of the other hotel that's winding down now, they voluntarily turned in their license. So they did, it was not revoked, but they agreed to turn it in. So in both cases, what you're seeing is even though it's the last resort. We had them agree to do it. It's not something where we had to fight tooth and nail to get it done. Um, and, and the one listed here, that notice of revocation, that's important because that shows that it's been shut down by the local licensing authority. And we not only put those up conspicuously in multiple places. But we also put up no trespassing signs for them. And the last thing I'll say is on this particular issue is. To show just our, our dedication to still being their partner. And, and to show you why um we're good stewards of the licensing fees that you helped adopt. When they were going through closure, they had um some need for some boards to help board up some unsecured doors. We went and bought those for them at Home Depot. Our team ran over. Use the licensing fees you helped impose to help them get secure and closed as quickly as possible because we saw that as a net benefit to the community. So again. Even if we're revoking their license, we're still walking alongside them, trying to make this as, as easy as possible on everyone and as a great benefit to the community. So moving forward, so a lot of you have seen some of that before, but you haven't seen that new data. Um, where are we now? Uh, we are currently in our second round of inspections. And it, when we had to turn this in three plus weeks ago, we had only had our first follow up hearing. We've had two others since then, so we're on our third follow up hearing. Um, and although the program has been an overwhelming success, and I would argue it is. Uh, there are areas where it could be improved. We've identified some that we're going to share with you as examples tonight. We know you might have your own and this is why we're having this conversation now. And then we look forward to you reviewing these and then us taking back what you recommend and, and working on it further. So. Uh, first of all, distressed structures. So. Addressing abandoned or neglected structures has been identified as a city priority. We're aware of that. What we can tell you is that as far as closed lodging establishments go, we'll make sure that those locations are a part of that effort. So the city staff working towards addressing abandoned and neglected structures will include lodging establishments as a part of that. Here's one option we want you to think about. Um. Expand the definition of crim- significant criminal act. So. Uh, for people who are new uh to council. Uh, I, I've talked all about calls for service ratios. There's another way someone can go to hearing and that's called a significant criminal act violation. And that's what the trails end was going to be taken up on hearing for was significant criminal events, not for them being over the limit, but for. Um, the homicide that occurred there recently and then another significant criminal event. Um, that was tied directly to uh management. So in those two cases. That would have been our first significant criminal event hearing. And currently a significant criminal act is defined as an act or acts that causes serious bodily injury or death to another person. Or an act or acts that requires law enforcement specialized unit or tactical response team. Now, one thing we made sure to um. Uh, not only agree to, but support is council wanted to make sure that we weren't overzealous in the use of significant criminal act. Because for example, let's say you're a hotel. And you have online booking. And a couple books their, their hotel on booking dot com. And I mean, some of these hotels now, you don't even have to get a key, right? It's on your phone and you never even talk to anyone at the front door and you just. Use your phone on the door and you go in. Well, let's say they go in and they get in a domestic and one of them uh kills the other. Understandably for the hotels, they had grave concern of, well, wait a minute, if we never see the person, it's all booked electronically. And this is the first incident they've ever had. They just checked in that night. What's, what, what's the due process there and what's the consideration for fairness? That's why we always use discretion on significant criminal event. We will, we will evaluate it for those needs. Can we show that management had a tie to it? Can we show that it's been ongoing over and over again? Can we show that we, police officers have warned them, hey, you're renting to known gang members that are violent or are dealing drugs? And then a month later, a violent act occurs there. That's the kind of thing we'd be looking for. But what we learned is our definition. It needs some tweaking because for those of you who remember, we recently had an event at, at um, one of the hotels where. A, a person shot a gun and rounds went into the neighboring auto dealership's cars. That wouldn't fit under significant criminal event with this definition. And so we weren't able to look at that case to take them to hearing because no one was hurt. And there was no special team called because by the time the police officers got there, they had fled into the car. So there's no SWAT team. There's no specialized unit. It was just us showing up to try and solve the case from there. So one recommendation, and this is just a draft. Would be that we would add the language of, or any back act that involves the use of a deadly weapon. That poses the threat of or causes injury to life or property. So, so this is a good example of where if we have someone who chooses to discharge a firearm. And thank God it doesn't hit anybody. But it takes out some community members' windows. And zings through their wall. I think that should be something we should look, be able to look at for significant criminal event. And this would allow us to do that. Another option, increase management availability and accountability. So. Uh, this is one where we've learned that we just want to tighten this up a little. So the current ordinance says a registered manager shall be on the premises of a lodging facility at all times. The lodging facility may have more than one manager. It's unlawful for any person to work as a manager without first registering. So the problem here is it doesn't say that they have to be available for first responders. So they can be sleeping. They cannot answer their phone. They cannot answer the door. And that kind of defeats the purpose of having a registered manager there at all times if there's an emergency. So one recommendation would be, the manager must be available in person or by phone at all times for contact by first responders. And importantly, the manager must have access to any surveillance systems for immediate use. Now, to protect their constitutional rights, first responders must have the manager's consent or a search warrant to use that footage. But this is important because some hotels, especially corporate hotels. There's, their surveillance systems will sometimes be cloud based. And they tell us, well, the only person who can run it is in Texas at headquarters. And if we're looking to, if we have a serious crime that's currently ongoing. We don't want them saying, well, I, I would help, I just can't. So this would require that they have some ability at the local level in an emergency. Or other, any criminal investigation situation to review that footage to help us. With that, I know I've said a lot and we'll open it up for questions and I'll. Uh, quit sharing my screen for now.
Right. Commander, thank you and thank you for acknowledging the, the whole team of, of city staff that have worked hard on this. I will. Also mention, not only did. Those bullets potentially go a- array in another. Business, but there were kids out playing five minutes before. And so certainly freaked out the neighborhood when the young kids were out playing and the gunshots were. Were going off. There is one question that, that we get quite often and. I know that our white swan has kind of changed hands as providing homeless housing. But for a lot of our unhoused, this can sometimes be their, their spot of last resort. How do we deal with that when we're looking at closures? Do we bring in our navigators? Do you work with the, the folks who are the tenants who are living there to help them find uh another place to live?
Yeah. So Mayor, I'll answer that question. Then I wanted to uh touch on one other thing from Lakewood's speech that again, didn't get to. Um, as far as homelessness goes, you're, you're definitely right. Sometimes this is last resort for people. In fact, we, we voucher some of our homeless navigation clients at, at some of the motels that we're talking about. Um, the key is. One thing that's always a guiding principle for us, and especially it's, it's, it's kind of. I think it's, it's a special um relationship in that our CAT team both does the licensing and it also works on all our homelessness issues because we're cognizant of that. So one thing I always like to say first and foremost is everyone deserves a safe place to stay. Even someone who's experiencing homelessness. So one thing I, I've spoken to that at, at. Um, you know, human services groups and others where they go, well, what are you, you're going to close down their housing? And I go. We're closing down the unsafe ones where they don't want to be robbed, deal with gunfire, drugs, et cetera. So that's something I like to bring up. To answer your point though, yes, you'll notice in the trails end one recently, they're currently on what's called a wind down right now. So we actually asked the hearing officer to give them a few weeks. To work out where people could go. So it wasn't like we, we walked in and said, put a padlock on all the doors and said, you're out. And that allowed us to go in. Our navigators went out with us the first day. And then also I personally emailed the, the homeless coordinator for the county and let her know. That they were shutting down. So in case they had anyone there, they could make alternative arrangements. Um. So that, does that help?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll go to Ms. Vincent as a, a lot of these are, are in her ward and her hand is up and I think she hears about this a lot.
Yeah, I would uh be more than happy to hand over that to somebody else and have it in your area. But as an aside, actually Mayor Paul um addressed one of the issues that I heard. So I'm glad that you addressed it that. This is strictly a CAT issue. Am I correct in that? I mean, the CAT team deals with the hotel motel and the homeless issues and everything.
Yep, yep. If it's a community issue, we generally deal with it. And so that's why. We saw lodging licensing as a community issue and also homelessness. And so we're able to, and that's why it's, it's important too because. Uh, although I wasn't there, so I can't speak to conversations, I can tell you our CAT officers were the ones who. Went to talk to people when they were being told they're going to have to find another place to stay. And our CAT officers know all about the resources we have. So if they have, if they have an opportunity, they can, they can provide that information. So.
And, and this is a question I've always had. One, one of the things in why I pushed so hard for this uh lodging license. Was because I knew there was prostitution. I knew there was drugs, but I also knew that there was sex trafficking. And child um endangerment issues. Do you have any breakdown as when we started in twenty seventeen? And I realize you may not have this now. This would be something. That I'd be interested in and where those issues are now, if there's been an increase, decrease in where we're at.
Sure. A- and I'm not sure if we had the data specifically for that before each of our lodging licenses, but that's. As far as what are we seeing as far as calls for service at the motels now from twenty seventeen to now generally. That's something we could look into. Um.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that information. Um. And one of the other things is, is. I guess this is more of a comment. I've been trying to tell people that they say, well, is it just a Colfax issue? And a lodging license is for the entire city. You can't ever tell where something may happen. Um. But sometimes people don't understand that if you're not responding to three thousand calls and reducing those on Colfax. That that frees up a lot of people for other things that people are concerned about in the city. And although I've been a part of it, um, I don't think maybe all council realizes that. White Swan was, I believe, like the second or third most call for service, if I recall correctly. And that's now under private ownership and although it'll change. Currently, um, they are offering clean sanitary, no bed bugs, no mice, no peeling wallpaper, no backed up plumbing. To families um that are homeless and they have a place and a safe place to live now. So. That's one of those unintended things that sometimes people don't know that can happen, that is certain, a good byproduct of this. So. And congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. And, and council, I'll add real quick a, a couple items off of what you said. One is. That's why, for example, when I brought up the Mesa Motor Inn and how they saw their calls drop more than fifty percent. We have such a good relationship with them. That's where we house a lot of our, our homeless navigation clients on voucher now. Because we know it's improved and we know it's safer. And that's one thing as an agency we really have done is we've said. Whenever we're housing someone, we don't look for, well, who's going to be cheapest or who will take the most? We, we care about. Are we housing people in a place where they have a chance for success? Um, the other thing, when you were talking about data, that's the other Lakewood speaks piece that I want to uh answer to real quick. They also said from the data, it looks like it's been successful. Is their data show that calls for service have not simply diffused out into the wider community. So obviously that's a little bit difficult to track, but what I can tell you is what we know. And that is that the clientele that likes to commit crime at the hotels. Like the hotels because there's not a lot of back, you, you don't get background checked to stay at a hotel. You don't have to sign a lease to stay at a hotel, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And additionally, the hotel. And additionally, the hotels that they like to work at are the ones where management has not, does not control it well. And so they're able to run, kind of run things the way they want. So when we have closed down a hotel or when we've had one of them shut down in agreement with us, um, we have seen movement, but it's generally been to the other motels. And because we have great relationships with a lot of those motels and we have the lodging license ordinance, we're able to work with that. We haven't seen it spread out into the apartment buildings, the residential areas, anything like that. So in answer to uh, Mr. Convent's other question, we haven't seen it diffuse out into the wider community beyond other hotels that are currently on the lodging license program.
So I have Ms. Springsteen, then Ms. Strom, then Mr. Abel.
Hi Commander, thanks for your presentation. I don't even know where to start. I have so many concerns with this. Um, I guess I'll start by saying my parents stayed at the White Swan on their honeymoon night. So I grew up in the neighborhood. I know, I know these motels. Um, and I think it would be so hu- helpful if we could have real dialogue around these issues between the police department and council and members of the community. Rather than, rather than just going on assumptions and lack of data. Um, so I, I'm looking at the changes you want to see. I have a concern about the sanction of needing armed security. If you're a hotel with 10 rooms, how are you going to afford that? I mean, really? Um, I have concerns about the idea of, uh, let's see. The changes that you're recommending with regard to bodily injury or death involving property as well. Um, I mean, shouldn't we really concentrate on people getting injured rather than property? Why do we need to add something like that? That makes absolutely no sense to me. Um, I'm looking at your request for changes on whether um, the manager must be available in person or by phone. Um, and it says the manager must have access to any surveillance systems for immediate use. First responders must have the manager's consent or a search warrant to use it. Why do we need that language that they must have access for immediate use? If we need a search warrant to use it? Other than, I mean, that feels like a strong arm, like, hey, you gotta show us your surveillance, dude. I don't agree with that. I mean, you're showing us photographs of people's private rooms that you went into. And I asked this last time this presentation was made, why are we seeing inside of people's private rooms that's being shown all over the city? Uh, which one of us would want our photographs of our private space to be shown that way? And and then it occurred to me, I, I want my police to be protecting me and to be um, uh, you know, looking at issues of real crimes that were committed. I want code enforcement to worry about is the motel manager not doing the proper upkeep? And that's what you were talking about with the photographs is look at, look at the way this place is falling apart. Well, that's an issue for management, not an issue for the tenants who live there whose fault, who are not at fault for the upkeep of these places. And then we're showing a graph of the hotels that, that are basically being targeted here and they are the small hotels along West Colfax. And maybe there are more, I, I am not discounting that there may be a lot more calls for service out there. I grew up on West Colfax. I know what you're dealing with. Um, but what I'm saying is the Hyatt House in Belmar is not having their tenants get knocks on the door asking to inspect and take pictures so it can be displayed for all to see in the city. Um, that I, I, I don't know. This just makes me uncomfortable. And then the proactive patrol. So you guys are going into the hotel parking lots and running licenses? I mean, I, I, I think our, our police can be better used on, on real issues of emergency rather than running licenses in, in the hotels on West Colfax. Um, and then I don't think we have real data here. So are these, are these issues about, um, are these really, so, so are the calls coming from Karens or tenants? That's a question I have. And um, and then, and then the final thing I would just mention is there's, I mean, there's a lot of land that is very valuable in the city that people want to develop. I really, really hope that the police department is not being used uh, in this regard to um, drive these businesses out so that we can develop that land. So these are just some of my concerns. Thank you. I hope you can answer a few of them. Thanks.
Counselor, I appreciate all the questions. I think first going back when we talk about the Colfax corridor, they definitely are uh, more often than not on there, but we def- we do have hotels that aren't on the Colfax corridor. Uh, one at Fifth and Sheridan has been through sanctions twice. Uh, the one at Sixth and Kipling roughly has been very close both times and almost went to sanction, went to it this time. And then just barely came in under the limit. So it's definitely not just a Colfax thing. It's not also a private owned versus corporate thing because there are a few of the hotels that are corporate. Um, second to your question about why not the Hyatt House, or at least your, your statement, one reason is because we do base it on calls for service. Um, so if you have, one thing I take great pride in is if you're under the limit, we may never come and see you. Because if you're under the limit and you don't have these significant criminal events that are occurring, we're going to leave you alone because you're running your business in a way that, that works for everyone. It's safe. And so we don't need to be um, seeking to change your management practices because there's not a public and safety's concern there. So for any of these hotels that are under the limit, some of them are down to like a point one or a point three. We don't, we don't see the need to uh, inspect their hotels because that's part of why we're trying to be business friendly. Now, as far as the privacy concerns you had go, I understand that. Um, there was only one photo there where a person was possibly seen and their face was uh, blocked out. Um, we didn't include any identifying information for anyone specifically. And I don't believe on any of those hotels, we gave any of the hotel names. And with the age of it now, that's where we felt it was okay because we really wanted to impress upon people what they looked like. Now, there's a lot more photos than that, but that's saved for hearing if necessary. And that's all, all taken care of there. Um, as far as when you talked about the sanctions, armed security is not one we're recommending changing. Uh, that's actually one that is already a possibility. But that's on a, a list of sanction possibilities. And again, it's up to the hearing officer. So in that case, we've only had one hotel receive that sanction so far in the two plus years we've been in place. And that was the hotel that saw the highest increase and became the highest hotel after licensing occurred. And where also there was rampant violent crime. So that's why that hotel had, had um, armed security. No one else has been required to do that. Um, and then as far as the piece about, um, um, trying to think of everything we talked through. So give me one second. I apologize. Um, oh, the, the, the question about changing the language to include property. What you'll notice there is we're talking about deadly weapons and deadly weapons being used. So really I'm not looking to, to get people whose windows get shut out by a BB or uh, a kid throws a rock through a window. I'm talking about guns being used and those guns going into people's personal belongings. Um, whether it be their home, their car or anything else. And, and there's an inherent public safety risk there. So that's why I feel um, comfortable with that. And then finally, uh, talking about the piece about proactively um, patrolling parking lots. Um, we all unfortunately know that auto theft has skyrocketed across the nation, but especially in Colorado. And you have to be able, oftentimes hotels are dumping grounds for these stolen vehicles and also for the suspects to hide. So if we're going to combat something that affects everyone in our community, um, I'm sure all of our insurance rates will be going up soon. I have a family member who's in the insurance industry and he said, get ready, it's coming. And you can thank auto theft rates for that. One of our jobs is to try and deal with that. So that's why we do that. And, and I will, I will gladly reopen it to you, ma'am. I want to make sure I answered all those or at least gave you. Oh, the data. Let me talk the data real quick. Um, so when I mentioned to uh, Counselor Vincent, that we didn't have that specific data, I don't have anything that talks about like, okay, how many um, child uh, trafficking occurred before and after? But we do have that real data that I showed you with calls for service in 2017 and then 2019, and then the following licensing years. And so that's where we can show that calls for service decrease. It's not broken down by call type. I don't have that right now. Um, but it does indicate, and so those are all real numbers. And I just didn't, especially in the Zoom world, I didn't want to include little, you know, six point two four, four point five six that, so that's why you just included that data. Um, when we take someone to hearing, it's to give you a little more background on that. Every calls for service is given to them so they can review it for due process. And then each call is reviewed not only by the cat officer and not only by our crime analyst, but also by the city attorney. Um, to make sure that calls aren't being counted against them that shouldn't be. We make sure there's a human element. And although we know human elements can bring error, we also know that if we just rely on a formula, that's not fair to anyone because it doesn't take into consideration the realities we all face. Um, but that data is there as far as what our call for service numbers are. Larger impact, I can't speak to that right now. Anything else, ma'am?
Well, uh, just a couple of things. So you know, I, again, the language of the manager must have access to any surveillance system or immediate use. That bothers me because we need to have warrants for that. We need to not just have immediate access where people feel compelled to reveal it. And so that concerns me for constitutional issues. Second, um, you know, we have a lot of homeless who are staying uh, or unhoused people who are staying in these properties. And so how do we, why, why are we talking about property management issues with upkeep and so forth, which I mean, is an issue I have found you know, with vouchers in general in this city, but and, and it's something that should be addressed. But my question is why are the police addressing that rather than, um, rather than code enforcement or, um, I mean, don't we need you guys for, for something other than that?
Sure.
So thanks.
Sure. So to answer your first question, as far as that, that piece about uh, having access to the surveillance footage, uh, much like you, I, I swore to hold up the constitution, including the fourth amendment right to search and seizure, right? So that's why I actually wrote that recommendation. And that's why it says that the first responder must have consent or a search warrant. Because if I had just left it with that piece of they shall have access, I wanted to make sure everyone understood we're still going to abide by the fourth amendment. And so to your point, we have to either have their consent. Is it okay if we look at this? And if you don't consent, which consent is obviously a, a, you know, an allowable exclusion to the search and seizure rule. If we don't, then we will go get the warrant. And, and I understand your concern about, well, could they pressure them or could they? But really what we're looking at here is we've taught our officers who are very professional, if you don't have a warrant and they're not consenting to what you're asking, you need to go seek one. We're even, we're even, we even go so far as to say, we're not going to set, tell them, well, fine, I'll go get a warrant. We teach them to say, I'll go seek a warrant because there's no guarantee we'll get it because the judge may deny it. So I share your concern about that. And that's why we put in that language to make it crystal clear. You have to have consent or you have to have a search warrant.
But you're the ones with the uniforms on. So consent, consent is different for different people. So I, I just think we should keep the, keep the constitution and the warrant in place.
Okay. Well, and I, but I think the important thing is, let's say, I'll give you an example, and I don't mean to use a dramatic example, but gets the point across. Let's say a, um, a mom and her kid are staying there and the kid gets kidnapped in front of the hotel room. If we're investigating that, time is of the essence. We need to go to that manager and say, could we, can we review your footage to see that? If we need to wait for a warrant in that case, that's minutes that, that's time we don't have. And I don't mean to use that dramatic of example to try and get my point, but it just, it drives it home to the layperson that sometimes consent is very much necessary um, to what.
Well, and that argument can be made in any criminal investigation. And I, I don't, I don't want to put barriers in place of you doing something like that. I want you to save the baby, you know, but.
Yeah.
But I, I also love the constitution. So that's the, that's the dialogue I'm having with you.
That's ground we both can, we can agree on. We both love it. And I think to your second question, it's not just the police that's doing this. That's why we have our partners like code enforcement. And that's why ultimately it's done under the city clerk's office through their licensing program. It's the city clerk that runs the license. We're the inspection partner and then we bring together code enforcement, the fire department of the building. And they're the ones who inform us of what they're seeing. So in, in answer to your other question, I'm not having cops checking electrical outlets or venting or, or, or stair, stairwells. It's, it's the professionals doing that. We're just there to look at what we know best, which is safety and security. And that's locks, lighting, landscaping, and also making sure that our partners feel comfortable inspecting in these types of places. So hopefully, is there anything else?
Thank you, Commander, so much. Appreciate it.
Yep, you're welcome.
Right. I have Ms. Strom and then Mr. Abel.
Thank you. Oh, you got my hand down. Thank you. So um, I'll come at it actually from a different angle. I just can't tell you how much I appreciate seeing, for one, the partnership that goes into this. Um, when I, I was just actually at a community event this past weekend and questions come up very quickly, I'm noticing over and over again about public safety and what is the police department actively doing to reduce our crime? So I really appreciate the, 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 the success that we're seeing that's a result of this. I love the fact that it's um, we've got West Metro involved in addition to many of the different um, departments that are here in um, within the city. I have been a product of corporate America. I worked at corporate for over a decade. And I do fully understand and appreciate having that um, need for access to someone immediately in management because a lot of times I know with the, the, the bigger companies, that's not necessarily an automatic. So I can appreciate the reason not only that that's in there, but also the surveillance part. Um, and, and being able to have access to that, you know, for the example of, of, of a child that was just kidnapped. Minutes are precious. There's a TV show all about the first 48 hours and how important that first 48 hours is. So um, I just want to say thank you very much. It's really exciting to see, and I hope counsel that was in place in 2017 that was part of this decision and bring this to the table feels a sense of pride over the fact that, that you guys, you know, so much of our, our time is spent feeling a little bit powerless. Sometimes there's changes that we know that the community wants and we want to be able to make them as well. But being able to move that cart isn't always easy to do. And this is something I think is exciting and has increased the safety in our community because of the partnership that started with that conversation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I uh, I would like to say that the changes that Commander Ellis has offered are very reasonable. I think very uh, well thought out. Uh, and Commander Ellis, yeah, it's time. Uh, congratulations. And you know, yeah, I don't want to get too promotional here, but boy, you sure do a great job and it's time that it was recognized. So thank you. And your whole staff is, is part of the reason, the whole cat team. Uh, secondly, uh, when even before this got started, is it when it was just a germ of an idea? Uh, Uh, a lodging facility in my neighborhood. It used to be not, we used to call it a uh, pre-detention facility. Because there were so many arrests being made there. Uh, and even before this was put into our ordinance, they realized their responsibility. They got with our SEPTED group and your folks and, and cleaned up their act. It, it's amazing. And um, I, I no longer hear complaints from the neighbors about that thing. So thank you very much. Secondly, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Vincent. She has kept an eye on all of these cases as they go through the process. And she's kept uh, the community well informed and that includes her fellow council people, especially those that uh. Uh, have um. The corridor, the Colfax corridor and their awards. So thank you very much for that, Ms. Vincent. And again, Commander Ailish, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. Okay, we're gonna go to the public input now. And if you wish to speak. Please uh, raise your hand. That's gonna be star nine. I know Tess was on, but she may have dropped. So if there's anybody in the queue that wishes to speak, please press star nine. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you want to call. And again, same, same deal, three minutes. I'll let you know when you're at thirty seconds with a double click. And if you give it your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going.
All ending in three, four, four, two.
Good evening, three, four, four, two.
Hi, this is Kirsten Ora Hood and I live um, on Glenmore Drive, a couple blocks from Trails End Motel. And I'm, I'd like to commend Commander Ailish and the community action team for all that they've done there. And would also say that I think that the changes he's proposing. If they had been in place before, um, we perhaps could have avoided some of the very serious issues. That happened at Trails End. Um, that things that put a lot of the neighbors in danger. So I, I just, you, you've done a wonderful job. I think this municipal code has been quite effective. And I really appreciate that it's in place. And um, I hope that going forward. You can give it a little more teeth so we can perhaps avoid some of the things that happened at Trails End. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Good to hear from you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak? Okay, I'll go ahead and close this portion. Um, so counsel, you have the two recommendations. Is there consensus to move those forward? So I'm seeing yeses. And then are there any other recommendations? Okay, well, I think at this time. Yes, Ms. Springsteen. You're muted. Please unmute yourself.
I, I would just recommend that staff look at um, whether we're in compliance with constitutional issues. This idea of um, surveillance without a warrant is very concerning to me. Let's just keep our liability low. Thanks.
Absolutely. And, and again, I, I think Commander, you, you said something that really resonated and this came to light. The other day when, when somebody mentioned that police have to be constitutionalist on the go. And you swore to uphold that same constitution. So I certainly appreciate that. Ms. Stewart, go ahead.
Thank you. I just was curious and this might be an ignorant question. But has there been talk about reducing the ratio number as well? Was that ever considered necessary? I know there were some concerns around a couple of the hotels that are not on Colfax having um, high calls for service. But not quite being at the threshold. So I just would be curious if that was discussed and why that wasn't recommended.
Yeah, so that is actually something that other places have done. They kind of started with one limit and oh, my pen likes to disappear with blur. So they, they start with one limit and then it uh, and then once they kind of got that settled, they moved to another limit. Ultimately, the reason we didn't recommend that is that's really a council decision since you decided what the limit is. We're going to leave that to you. If you chose to look at changing that ratio, that's your prerogative. And we would be glad to provide information on what that change might do or not do and what impact that could have. But we would really leave that for you to decide. You're, you're not wrong. There's some that have been like flirting at the line for a while now. Um, but that's really for you to determine as a council and not us as staff. So if that's something you're interested in, um, please just let us know and we can, we can look at what a ratio change would look like. And what kind of impact that might have.
Ms. Stewart, that is a great question. That could lead to some great conversation. Um, Ms. Franks, your hand is up.
Thanks. I just wanted to build off of that. I think it's worth having the data to see how close maybe some are. And if we, if we move the needle down a little bit, would we, what benefit would we achieve or what detriment? So I think it's fine to, to, to ask for some information on that. I'm not ready obviously to recommend anything. But I think Counselor Stewart had a good point that if there's some that are flirting sort of at that edge, what does that mean for the people who live around those areas? And certainly wanting to respect sort of, you know, all parties of, you know, perspectives. But I'd be interested in seeing how many, how close and if we moved it slightly, uh, what types of impact would, would that see? Really always looking to continue to improve community safety. We know when you mentioned earlier about the auto thefts, I, if I don't hear about that six to eight times a week. Uh, with people who I know or neighbors down the street or that type of thing. We know that there's just a lot of pressure and a lot of those hotels are, like you said, where they, the car either gets dropped off or some other activity happens. So I'd be interested in the data points.
Thank you. And I'll circle back to that after Ms. Maya Guerrero.
We just wanted to know if. I basically just wanted to know if um, we have ever considered that we could use a similar type of program with apartments. Rather than just lodging like motel and hotel. Um, just recognizing that this is a complaint I've gotten from lots of folks around, not people surrounding the apartments. But the actual residents of apartments wanting to have some mechanism of accountability with their landlords or the property owners.
Okay, Commander, and that might lead into the, the, our multifamily program that we do have.
Yeah, so uh, Counselor, thank you for the question. And this is something I, I think we can share more with you on. Um, where we've had great success voluntarily is our crime free multi-housing program with apartments. Because in the case of the apartments, there's a vested interest on the part of management and ownership to have good long-term clients. Um, and, and they risk because they're placing people immediately into tenancy. There's a great risk to them if they don't screen well and they, because then they're, they're kind of stuck with them and they have to go through the eviction process. So what we use now is crime free multi-housing, which is a program that Lakewood still continues to be a leader in the region for. We have probably the largest program, at least in the metro, if not in the state. Longmont has a large one too, but theirs. Includes like duplexes and single rentals. Ours doesn't. It's only multifamily. Um, we have a hu- around a hundred and fifty different. Uh, groups on board with that. And we can gladly share more information about that with you. I know we'll be seeing you coming up. Uh, so we can, we can discuss that further. Um, but we haven't looked at it from a compulsory perspective yet. Because that would be a, a huge lift, as huge of a lift as this was with forty plus hotels. Um, when you start talking about all the multifamily and where do you cut it off, that would be a much larger lift. Um, and it, it deals a little bit more with when you're talking about true tendency. Um, you know, that, that, that's a question there as well. So um, what I will say is I, I definitely get where you're coming from, but I think we've had very great luck with our, our crime free multi-housing. That's been in, around for, I mean, it's at least fifteen years now, probably more, so.
And thank you for that. Maybe we, we can get just a high level thing on, on that for the council, for our new folks, especially what that program is. We can certainly offer that to, to folks that could be struggling. So just to circle back, I have, I have um, consensus to move forward on the two recommendations. And then there was a question about seeing some data as to lowering that. Is that something the group would like to see? Just to review and see what that looks like. I'm getting a lot of nods, yes. Okay, Ms. Hodson, is that?
Yeah, in fact, Mayor, I was going to offer that any modifications to this ordinance need, will come back to you for first and second reading. So at second reading, when we have the public hearing, we'll make sure to have some options for you. And some data as it relates to that threshold um, ratio. So you can make that decision and make that modification if you'd like during the um, second reading. And in the meantime, as you have board meetings and you interact with your constituents, that's probably a nice time to have this conversation as well. So i- if it's um, if it's suitable to you, then we can have that information available for the formal action that you'll take to make these modifications.
Great. Okay, anything else for Commander Ailish? Well, again, I, I'd like to thank you. I know we have representatives from the clerk's office, um, from the cat team, from everybody's on this call tonight. And so again, want to echo what a lot of folks have said. Thank you for the tremendous effort from all the folks who have engaged in this. And uh, it is a cool thing to watch happen after a, a lot of heartache and consternation with the community to see where we're going with this. So great job. All right, so study session, we typically go into committee reports. And I had a request from Ms. Stewart, since we haven't met this week, to offer any meeting updates. If you're having a ward meeting, I would like to share that with the community as well. So please, if you have any committee updates or you'd like to share your ward meeting, uh, please raise your hand. Ms. Vincent?
Yes, um, I've heard from the majority of folks and it looks like the HPC meeting. Um, we're going to have an overview of three questions that we need answered before we can bring um, the ordinance back to council. For consideration. And we are having an executive session on the fourth. So we were going to meet right after that with the committee. And since we had a hard time getting everybody together. So I still think I'm, I'm waiting for a couple of folks, but we certainly have a majority to move that through. And we're hoping that'll take place right afterwards at about eight o'clock. And since we're mentioning meetings, I apologize to the people who were on. Um, we couldn't zoom and I think we lost like twenty people. So I apologize, but I can talk to you one-on-one. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Springsteen?
We are going to have a Ward Three meeting this Saturday at United Methodist Church. Ms. Stewart and I have been in Washington DC and had tried to plan a little better. We don't quite have our topic down at this point, but believe me, people will be able to talk. And um, it'll be a first sort of, we had an in-person meeting before in December. But I, I, I think it'll be a little more intensive where people can ask questions and, and just feel heard. So I hope people will attend. And I think it's so interesting that, that Ms. Stewart has that. Um, I'm glad that she's my ward mate because she has the ability to um, get the mayor to allow us to do this. Whereas I didn't. Thank you.
I'd just say she just asked. That's all you gotta do. Reach out, communicate. Ms. Franks, you're up.
Oh, thanks, Mayor Paul. Um, I just wanted to uh, let folks know that uh, for the uh, screening committee. That uh, you should, if not today, tomorrow, see an email looking to schedule for our next uh, session. So just keep an eye out on email. If you haven't already seen something, I haven't checked mine tonight. But we're trying to get things scheduled where we can uh, meet, meet a timeline to get the full uh, planning commission seated at the same, same meeting. So just stay, stay tuned, check email and, and let's uh, try to find a time in the next week or two.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Ah, that's the first time I've done that. Oh, boy. Um, I was asked by Councilwoman Maya Guerrero to uh, give the legislative committee report since her wifi is spotty. So we just wanted to update everyone that the legislative committee has supported HB twenty-two, ten fifty-one. Um, you will have to remind me, I'm like racking my brain and my brain has lost it, so.
Ms. Mayagora, you are unmuted if you can weigh in. I think that's the Lytech funding, so the increase.
Thank you. Yes, that's what it is.
Portable housing.
Yes.
Which is incredibly important. All right, any other committee updates or ward meetings? Seeing none. Ms. Hodson, do you have anything?
Um, I guess I would just like to announce publicly that we have received a notice of retirement from our public works director, Jay Hutchison. It's a big loss for the city. He's been with us for, I think, a little more than thirty-eight years. And has a, has been a great, um, a great employee. So we'll miss him. His final day is May second. So you have a little bit of time, I think about six weeks to um, to express your, whatever you'd like to say to him. So we'll miss Jay.
Big time. So thank you very much. Bittersweet. Okay, well, we will go ahead then and wrap this up at eight forty-five PM. We'll be back next week on the twenty-eighth and I hope everybody has a wonderful evening. Thank you.